Forge, nice to be here. I'd like to add one thing, and that's down in business is meeting dates for twenty twenty-three. And we got another month yet, but it's my first month dates out to you all. Worth of thought, so that's the only addition I have.
At the bottom.
Uh, new business, yep, twenty twenty-three meeting days in town. I think I'll give you all these big letters. Again.
Oh. I'll second the motion to approve the agenda.
I think you're making the motion.
Yeah.
And I'll second.
Discussion, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion carried. Uh, August tenth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes. Those are all set to you all. I get a motion to adopt those.
Yeah.
I'll second the motion.
Uh, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Uh, public comments? Open up public comments, you made any comments?
Uh, Jamie Slater, Cato Township. Are you planning on working on solar ordinance tonight, or is that upcoming meeting?
Um, it's on our agenda.
Okay, so.
I mean, we're gonna do a hard stop at seven o'clock, so.
That's fine, that's fine, so I had sent some to you guys.
We got it all.
Perfect, I just wanted to make sure you guys received them then.
Yep, they were distributed to each one of the members, so.
Okay, my big concern with anything solar is the um percentage of land usage. So I hope that we set up something to preserve the land for the farmers. Obviously, there's the setbacks and stuff like that, I'm just barely skimming the 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 research with solar, so. Um, my biggest concern is the preservation of land.
Any other comments? I see a hand over here. No other public comments? I'll close the public comments then. Dave, uh, administrator report?
Okay, I don't have the August report, I'll definitely bring it in next month. Uh, September, we had a one permit, it's a shop, uh, farm shop. And that's, uh, there's no address on it, it's on North Bacchus Road, Benjamin, uh, Mattel, Matt. M A T T E L, R L E, I'm sorry. And that's all for September.
So he doesn't have an address?
Uh, he's in the process of getting one, I have a tax ID number here.
Yes, sir.
I wrote that down. But there's no address on it.
So will they send a text file?
Probably could have registered his, but you should never.
Yeah. For the property, yeah.
Right, they have to get it seen by the post office, so.
Do you have, you made any today?
Um, I just want to, has anything happened with that property at Honeymoon Heights where?
The fencing?
Uh, no, where they didn't own, oh, they don't have a house, but they wanted to build a pole barn on a lot that they owned. And they filed with the ZDA, but the township wasn't gonna cash their check until they gave up.
No, nothing, uh.
Nothing that you heard.
Nothing yet, so.
And then, I guess I was more for the planning commission records, because we said that Honeymoon Heights has their own rules that we typically uphold. Could we, as a commission, get a copy of what?
We don't uphold their rules, we can't do any, we cannot enforce it in any way.
Okay, well, I believe Larry at our ZDA hearing said something to that effect, that typically, you know, well, but I guess. When you go out there to, they they apply with Cato Township. What do you consider, if anything, for what Honeymoon Heights may regulate?
Normally, what Honeymoon Heights does is they. Put their regulations down the same as ours, okay, just like they wanted us to change one thing about the uh year, two, I don't have time to say anymore. About the accessory building, unless you own a a property in Honeymoon, outside dwelling, you can't do it, so we did uh count uh just our zoning book so it says that. So we can enforce that, that's in our books now.
For August tenth and sixteen, when they accept.
So, in our book, and what I have, I I don't think I have that.
Where's that?
All the towns, they're like, they have the same thing for.
More correspondence, they're receiving correspondence.
Yeah, but that wasn't in there. I don't have anything corresponding. The only thing, only thing that I've ever seen for Honeymoon Heights, I think it's in the residential suburbs, they have their main restrictions. And then there's a second page that says exceptions for Honeymoon Heights, and it.
Except since you have page seventy-eight at the bottom, it's uh seven oh, uh, seven point zero four point one, I think it is.
Yeah, but it doesn't say anything about.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, if you're on utility building permits, will be issued only to those who have an existing dwelling that needs to exceed all subdivision requirements or building permit for Honeymoon Heights.
It's they put that in on April two thousand seventeen.
Okay, is that the only thing that?
That I know of, yes.
And did any of the other, except my understanding is there's like five associations out there besides Honeymoon Heights, is there any?
Stanton Lake and Douglas, they adjust uh theirs to ours, Indian Lakes, they adjust to theirs to ours, which I stay in contact.
Well, I'm talking to Town Line, I guess Town Line.
Oh, just Town Line, that's the only one, and uh there's Birch Shore subdivision, but uh they have a covenant or something, I never got into that because. Um, you know what, I think I might have a copy of it, but uh that's their own thing, they'd have to hire their own lawyer to take care of it. Birch Shore subdivision, one, two, three, I have four pages of their covenant, I don't know if you guys do, but um.
I know, I've never had one. The whole, the whole.
Do you have copies of that?
That's what it says, see, the planning commission agrees in force required building restrictions, seventh and one ninety-eight, now the meeting minutes.
Sixteen, that was a little bit.
Yeah, August tenth sixteen.
Maybe, maybe you could fill in some of the gaps on our minutes project, because that, so we'll we'll get to get that.
Yeah, 'cause I remember we got a whole pamphlet over there, all the lines, we said we'd always go with the, we go with your restrictions, so this uh.
I was, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I have a question for you, Dave, um, there's, there's people that are applying for building permits for pole barns.
Yes.
And there's this new word out there, a pole barn condominium.
Or.
Barn dominium, barn dominium.
Barn dominium.
Barn dominium?
Yeah.
So, with that being said, I mean. Do we need to look at that, because, I mean, is it a barn, or is it, is it a red place that they're gonna live in?
To me, I see it 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 as the same as if it was a uh, a dwelling with an attached garage, it's a dwelling with a a.
I recently, with the permit that we pulled for the house that was built next door, they have requirements at the building department for pole building homes. They have a whole section that, if that's what you're applying for. And then you go there first to get that approved before you apply for the permit. So it's it's through Macon County.
Well, they won't, they start to go through us, I'd have to approve it before the county, you look at it, but then, because it has to be approved by us and them to get it, not just me or that.
Because I know that um Oprah built a house right on um homey that was basically a pole building home, you can't tell it looking at that.
Right.
You have the construction standards required to to state what I'm building a pole barn or a pole barn as a dwelling.
So should we, um, should we, we rephrase that a different way then, or it just, it it just is?
It's it's actually just a house that was built, it's just a different style of building.
I think, I think when somebody applies for a pole barn, it's not gonna have a livable space in it. And if it wants to have livable space, then you'll apply for a dwelling permit.
So are you asking that question then to them?
Part one.
Do you ask that question to them then?
What question?
Whether there's gonna be a living space or a pole barn.
Oh, if they put a, put an application in for a pole barn, I don't ask, I take it that it's a pole barn, they would uh put it in there.
I don't think that's always the case.
No, that could be, um. I could add to their, add a question to everybody, and hopefully they'll tell me the truth.
Does that change the whole process?
No, it'd be the same thing.
Okay.
Wouldn't matter, it would matter at the county now, because, and for our assessor, you know, because they'd only assess it as a barn. If it's a dwelling there, I would think, I don't know much about taxes, but I would think it would raise the tax a little more than just a pole barn there.
Do you all see those again or no?
I mean, I could see somebody applying for a pole barn permit, building a pole barn and changing it to a dwelling, but to be a legal dwelling, you have to get a CFO, which I suppose the process could start. And then you go to the county and ask to change it, and there is where they would put the requirements of what you'd have to do.
Yeah, for septic and.
Right.
And electrical, everything, it'd all, yeah.
Yeah, but you, when you apply for a pole barn, like for me, I had to apply for the pole barn, get the variance, because it was gonna be taller than what was allowed, and then an electrical permit. For the house, you have to pull a mechanical permit, an electrical permit, a septic permit, and then that includes a whole other department, which is.
But do you think people are doing that?
If they are, they're not doing it.
Right, I guess that's the question.
I've never heard of anybody not doing it properly, but unless somebody snuck one in, nobody knows about it, usually somebody finds it or knows about it.
Well, you'd have an address, and somebody could be trying to live there and claim it on their taxes, so, and you can't get homestead taxes without a CFO.
What's a CFO?
A certificate of occupancy. Because we're, they have, they reassess the taxes on the house that we don't have finished yet, and they increased it half the property value that they say it's going to be worth, and I'm like, well, why can't we have homesteaded? You're gonna charge me for it, but we don't get the homestead until we get the CFO. Which, when you're doing it yourself, doesn't happen quickly. We're two years in, so.
Okay, that's all I have, anything else? Um, Dave, on the board?
I've got three questions, and first one, do we have a commitment from the company to order for our master plan, Todd just told me Roar or McCann on?
Is there anybody here from Roar McCann today?
That's what he said, is that they're supposed to come to this meeting, they knew about it, and he's supposed to let you know to put it on the agenda, but nobody showed up with it. Um, next question, possible reimbursements, the money to the commission members for all the work and wind ordinance. So he gave me the amount that other townships, surrounding townships got paid in the planning commission. But he says we can't change the dollar amount until next physical year. But then Larry said that we could be paid a bonus for what we did, so I asked Todd, what do you wanna do, and he said to ask the board to come up with a number, and then for me to bring it back.
Ask the plan.
Yeah, ask the plan commission years.
So let's talk about that before we go down to the next topic, uh, what I did is went to the board, month before last, I guess.
Yeah.
And asked them a few questions, and one of the questions was that. Um, I mean, we put a lot of work into that wind, a lot of extra hours. Um, not that we get reimbursed a lot for even, so that we attend. Um, but I asked them to consider doing something for the commissioners. And now they're throwing it back at our ball field and asking us what we want, I guess, or anything. So with that being said. Kind of a weird way to do it, but.
I feel uncomfortable having this conversation, I'll be very honest about it.
No, I'm saying, but.
I didn't come here for a paycheck, let alone the the money that they do pay us to be here, I'm I'm here because I I felt that that was a voluntary position. And I understand the want for the bonus, and I feel like that should come from the board, not from us asking. And that's where I feel kind of uncomfortable part about it.
Understood.
So.
Yeah, I didn't give them a mouth either.
Right.
Um, I just asked them to consider something for each of you, because of all the, you know, the the work that you did, I mean, some of you attended seminars, some of you sent seminars on. Webexes or phone conferences, I mean, some of you, um, you just took a lot of time in investing into research, and, I mean, there was many hours. I mean, I figured out myself, it's probably over seventy hours I was invested in this thing, and that's probably going on the website. So, I I don't know, I, I mean, I don't disagree with you.
Yeah, I mean, do you like, just pull a number, arbitrary number that you think is fair, or do you like call other planning commissions to see if they ever?
Well, he did, he was.
Well, have they ever done the bonus, you know, he probably got what they get each meeting.
I don't, I've never heard of anything like that happening, we did.
But Larry, Larry was quick to say it, but, yeah. It would have, seems like it should come from them if they're gonna do that.
I also feel the fact that they changed some major points and basically didn't do anything for all the work that we did, that spit in our face on that one, then give us money on the other side, like it's. I don't know, I just, it's.
Well, I'm not looking at it from that perspective, I understand that, but I'm just looking at it from all the time, effort, and, and meetings, and some of the meetings were long, and there's some that probably pushed in three hours.
Thing is that I I don't disagree, I just hate that they sent it back to us to come up with a number to send back to them for their approval.
Write it down and anonymously put it in a little, a little thing and shake it and draw a number.
Joe, can I say something? Um. You can say no.
No.
Any other conversation on that? Joe, you're just sitting over here.
Well, I just, I came into the game too late, I'm not allowed on anything.
No?
I I, the only thing I could, I I don't feel comfortable just without not a number, you know, I don't even know what to say. But if if we wanna pursue it, it seems like maybe calling around and asking if others have done some things, in a way which it sounds like we're saying. We don't think they ever have, we would be like the Mavericks that started it, so I think, I don't know what we'll get, so.
I think it's definitely been one of the hottest topics, I mean, it is the hottest topic I've ever met.
Well, I guess, I I'll pose you guys with a question, at any point during the extra research that you've done, in the time that I know that I've taken to it, I was not sitting hours thinking, ooh. Maybe I'll get a little extra from this.
No, no, no.
I mean, and so, with that being the mindset about it, I feel like they should, if they feel inclined to give us a bonus, they should, they should come up with a number. That's how I feel.
They know what's in the budget too, you know, what's available, I guess, and and still, I think you're trying to look out for us all.
I know, that that, and I appreciate it, that's what I'm saying, I just don't feel comfortable sending them a number.
I mean, I feel like they'll go in front of them and ask you that question to them, but, you know, I guess I'm just saying, for all of 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 all your hard work and effort, because, you know, it's just like you're saying, it's a lot of volunteer or commitment to your your township, I mean, I understand that, but. You know, we put a lot, we put a lot of time in.
Would it be weird to send it back?
Well, or say, what's, what's, what's in your budget, I mean, we're not saying we want to max it out, but we don't, you know, we have no idea what kind of number to put out there, so, but I guess.
Start high, you can always look down.
They could put me in that spot. So I just put a big question, right?
Well, I guess the other thing is, um, you know, Kim was on this commission too, and do we even consider, if 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 something is done, do we consider that? Versus Jill coming on, I think, uh, maybe a couple of weeks. Two, three months left of it, I I don't know. Just that, just throwing up. So, I guess what we're, I'm I'm hearing, Dave, this is that, um. If they feel as a board that they want to pursue it, then the commission is saying. That they should come up with a number, not us.
Based on their budget, what's in their budget for such extras, if you will.
Yeah.
Use that number like, say seventy hours. You should be getting like seven hundred bucks, man.
I'm not asking for that.
Serious, that's what I'm saying, it's it's kind of a nonsense, because it makes it arbitrary.
I could tell you, quite a few months ago, um, I contacted some other townships in Macon County, and, you know, the 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 reimbursement that you get for meetings, people, uh, is, is.
Low.
Is low, it's very low, it is very low. Um, and I don't know if I can afford for the money, but there should be a fair reimbursement there too. Um, and I can tell you that it hasn't been looked at in Cato Township in a number of years, and I've asked the last two years for it to be looked at, and I've been just bypassed saying we're not looking at it this year. And I think now. Todd realizes that there needs to be some adjustments out there, maybe you talked about that, I didn't attend that meeting, I guess, I don't know, but there, there needs to be some adjustments made moving forward for next year, will there be, I don't know.
How how much difference, I guess?
Some are, um, maybe uh doubled what you don't get.
I mean, would it be reasonable to, like, instead of a bonus, almost like a back pay of, we should have been up to market, up to here, and then.
I think they can do that based on the budget was set and to, no.
Well, to come up with what the bonus is, you know.
Yeah, good, I mean, good point, maybe, I guess, I think.
That's why, I mean, if you, I was trying to think of meetings, we went to the twenty dollars more.
See, the seminars that we went to, we attended a seminar, some of us at the MCC, correct? Um, I think there was two of them there. Um, and it was told to me that we should be reimbursed for that. That's a, that's a meeting, and we just need to turn in.
Paperwork.
Paperwork, I don't know what type of paperwork we fill out for that.
And you just turn our notes in, and somebody went to this and it was.
Yeah.
Cost us much.
So, um, knowing that, I guess, based on the future of us attending, then, you know, I know that, I know that Todd knew that we went, because obviously I copied him on the note, I made the reservation. So, um, and it's in our meeting notes.
Didn't they pass to pay for some of that too? Like the the fee to go, or was that out of pocket?
Um, if you attend one, that has to be pre-approved, but yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, but these are just from Macon County planning, they held those two meetings in MCC, so, just food for thought moving forward. Um, and I think the ones we went to was in April, if I remember right, um.
I haven't looked back.
Twelve or seventeenth or something, so.
Or somewhere, yeah, you went to the Ag one, there was one that was like Ag based, or I just went to the one.
I just went to the one too.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, um, I'll pull that meeting notice or meeting notes back out and, um, Dave, I'll let you take that back to them, or they can. Move backwards on that whole piece there.
Yeah.
So, but just, just so you know, moving forward in the future, that if it's, you know, for for the planning commission, then you should be reimbursed for that. So, news to me, I did not know that. So, yeah, some of the other commissions get paid more than double, um, there's one that's even maybe seventy-five percent more than what what you will get. So, and it has not been looked at in years. So, okay.
Yes.
Yep, we got two more, okay, what does the board want to see in the solar ordinance, I asked, and all Todd told me was that he gave you the original, what was in there, but it wasn't ever published, so it's not. Actually established, and that's what he recommended you go off on.
Yeah, that was one of the things I asked him too, was is that, hey, give some of the thought, I mean, if we knew what your thoughts were as a board when it comes to wind, then we could have maybe. Talked more about that, and maybe not still, not adhered to what they recommended or what they, what their thought was, but, um, and you all have a copy of that solar in your ordinance, because.
Nope.
It never got in.
It never got put in.
Oh, um.
If we end at three one four, three point four, we don't go to three point.
Oh, you have a next question? You got it, Joe, you got it?
No, you wouldn't, I wouldn't, I didn't have it, so I couldn't put it in jokes.
Yeah, like, is it?
Oh, I put, no, that's one from Les, Leslie was that. Yeah. Oh, no, I don't have it.
Now, this is just like a template. Like, oh.
See, when I looked before, I didn't see it. Because we, because it was talked about, um, I think just as I was coming on back in twenty eighteen. Probably early twenty eighteen is when it was supposed to have been taken to the board to be approved and public hearing and all that, so, and it never, it never took place, and that's why.
I see on my three point four, I have, I know it's old, but it's an Indian energy tur- turbine, that does three point four.
It would have been after that.
Yeah.
I have an electronic copy of it, that way that I asked Jordan before, so if that's something you want me to print off again, I'll make that, so I.
I have a question regarding that, because when we first started with the wind, it was said that that was voted upon, and that's why the ordinance was written as it was, even though it was outdated and old. But that had been voted on by Cato Township residents, and that's why it was in the ordinance, so the question is, has solar ever been voted to be in our?
The commission did, but not.
Not the public.
Not the public.
The.
The wind was never done that way.
The commission didn't hold the public hearing, they just sent it to the board, because the board did like vote to approve it, but there was never a public hearing, so it was never.
Right, what I'm referring, be- before I was on this commission, I was at the board and asked the question, why, why do we need to allow the wind turbines in here in the first place? And it was told to me because we had already voted on that, and this was a vote that happened before I was a resident.
Well, I think they thought they did.
So, but that vote is just that we wrote an ordinance, it got a public hearing, and then it got added in?
There was never a public hearing.
For the solar.
For the wind, there was, that's all it was.
Okay, that's why it was in here.
Right.
So at no point was there like a proposal to Cato Township residents to say, yes or no, we wanna allow industrial turbines, that we wanna allow solar.
Yeah, everybody's, what vote?
Yeah.
No, not a vote, just the commission.
Just, so that was kind of a false story told to me, that, because it was told to me that we have to allow them because it was already voted in.
I don't remember voting.
That's the one why we have to, we can't deny a use, use, I've kind of, you can't just say, you can't have this use if it's in state, I guess.
If there's feasible, out of the.
But I can't build a single white trailer anymore, I mean, that was the whole, that was the understanding that I had, that it had been a proposal that was voted upon, so we have to at least have some language. And we already had some language, so we were revising the language. Because as it stands right now, we don't have language for solar.
We don't, because the process was.
Okay.
So, so what's coming, saying is, well, you have to follow anything, basically, right?
Well, no, I'm I'm agreeing, we need to have a solar ordinance, for sure, I mean, people wanna be able to put solar panels up on their houses, there's, there's no issues there.
Yeah.
So anyways, but, we'll get you a copy of it, but, yeah.
So do you want me to print that out, is my question?
Um, you can send it to her.
Or email everybody?
Yeah. Anything else, Dave?
I have one more, brought up the board, Dave's had some, um, some uh repeat offenses for Blight. And uh, they've talked about it, and then Pat Carroll in the audience, and he said that it brought up to the board that there was um problems with this, well, apparently the sheriff department was there, and they said. That they were handling that, somebody would call them out in town, they'd, they'd enforce the Macon County law. And because Dave said he had to have your driver's license approved, Dave would be able to take it, you know, to the court, and they were like, well. Dave's got some repeat offenders going on, I don't know, some more than a year, and there's a couple right now that, I mean, he doesn't really feel safe enough to go there. That he's, you know, and so Pat said he would like to hear back from Dave on one that he's talking about, to see if they call him the sheriff department, does something. So all I said, if it does work, then I'm wondering down the road, if it works good, we should amend our ordinance to say in there, you know, if there's a repeat offender for so many times. Or if you feel safety isn't right, to just go right to the.
Sure.
Bypass our laws and go right to.
Look, I, I was in the audience, and my question about that whole process is, is you have to have their birthday and driver's license number.
Or, or one of them.
Or one or the other, to fill out the site, to fill out.
A ticket, a citation ticket to file with the court.
And you can't go to the sheriff and ask for that information?
I asked him, they will not give me them.
See, I think that's where the problem is, because you're not gonna walk up and be like, hey, I need your birthday before I register this.
They would give it to me, you know.
Right. We should not be relying on, under, no offense to you, but you shouldn't have to get that information.
I can't, you know, somebody gave me numbers and all that, I got on the internet, and it doesn't work either, I gotta have their.
It sounds like we have to just call the sheriff.
What does that ticket do with there?
Report it, pardon?
And so, if if you can't fill out your paperwork, you call the sheriff, and what, then it's in there?
They're supposed to take care of it.
Okay.
They're gonna, that's what they're saying.
That's what, that's what I kind of wanted to hear, a feedback, whether that was working, and I would have to do something at the county.
Yeah, because I mean, like you said, it would be ridiculous, you'd be like, hey.
So I guess, Dave, I would, I would, I would call the sheriff if you, if you don't have the information.
Well, there's one guy in color, he's paid two tickets, I just checked to see if he paid the second one, he hasn't yet, but as soon as he does, or if he doesn't, he still has another fifty-six days. For that ticket to, then. for that ticket, uh, then they would give him another fine, and I think they'd find him guilty for not appearing after that fifty some days, then I can raise another ticket, but the guy just keeps paying the tickets and keeps living that way. It's, I don't know.
So is, is it your belief we should change?
Not yet, I mean, I think we should.
If it doesn't work.
Yeah, if it doesn't, I mean, we should find out what goes on, I mean, I bring you the cam, which is a no repeat offender, it's just.
I'd have to look it up, some township, it's a hundred dollars, second offense, two fifty, third, no, or five. And I don't know what this one is, I just happened to look at one earlier today.
I mean, cause I guess the pro- this whole process is to eliminate the light, trying to get them to, so.
Clean it up. So, that's why.
Right, and at a certain point, if you just keep finding somebody and they keep paying it, well, clearly their money's going to that and not actually cleaning up the problem, so here we get another reciprocal problem.
Yeah, back, back to the cheaper paying ticket though than it is to clean it up.
Now, there's some, a couple of townships that's a misdemeanor, instead of a civil infraction, the attorney takes care, I still want to take pictures and give them the, uh, thirty day notice that's written in the book.
Right, I guess, are, are we, do we need to look into, how do we, how do we fix that system?
Well, if it's, if it's a misdemeanor, then in the book, they have it where the person has to pay all court costs, or lawyer's fees, any kind of expenses, and they get stuck paying that, so it's not costing township anything, I don't charge any extra, I don't.
Right, but it ultimately, if they're, again, the problem's still not getting corrected.
But then it's a misdemeanor, and then the judge will order them to clean it up, and if they don't clean it up, then it's contempt of court, then they possibly.
It makes the punishment more expensive than you check it.
So we'll wait and see, what did you find out, Dave, as far as going to the sheriff, and if it doesn't work, then feed that information back to, now the board.
I wonder, like, one on color, I've issued two tickets, I'm waiting for, uh, go to one step farther, I gotta wait for the courts to do something before I can issue another ticket, should I just turn that into the sheriff's department, be done, cause the guy's gonna just keep paying it, I know.
I would, I would.
Just get it, even though, yeah.
I would.
I'm, I'm kinda curious why you need a person's ID and.
So, you have public record.
No, but so, they make sure it's the right person on base, so if they have a warrant or whatever.
All you need is a property tax ID, it'd be up to the responsibility of property.
You said that, well, no.
You still have to have, cause there's more than, uh, one, uh, day, well, or more than a person with my name, and they have to make sure if they put a warrant or send a summons out, they have to make sure it's the right person, you know, if you could have the same person's name living in the same town, then they don't wanna end up in trouble.
They still got property tax identification on a piece of property.
On the ticket, it doesn't have any, it just, it had a birthday or, uh, that, it feels like a regular speeding ticket, kind of.
Tickets should be changed.
Uh, we get the county to change it.
I, I do have one thing on, on, I was wondering if you could ask the board if you could get.